Certification of closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to the best of their knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Seeing none, if you agree to the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Glenn Wallace?
Yes.
Steve Breedy?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Boris Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dyke?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to turn to regular session.
Thank you. Let's stand for invocation and remain standing for the pledge, please. Your prayers. Thank you dear Lord for giving us another day. Thank you for blessing us, giving us our blessed lives, watch over our families, our friends, and the citizens of Russell County. Help us to lead and guide the people of Russell County. Help us to have an open heart and mind when dealing with the business of our county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do need to amend the agenda from things to be included. And the first thing we need to change is to add under county attorneys, number seven, a vote and motion on our local litigation. We'll add that to number seven. Then under county administrator, if we'll add 12, the Caulfield Economic Authority Resolution. 13, a public hearing for our next month meeting for Cleveland School. 14, a public hearing on Gibbons Elementary. 15 is the solid waste truck driver employment. So do I have a motion to have the amendments?
Make a motion to amend the agenda as you state.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So the first thing we do have on our stated agenda is a presentation from Quench Independent Living Services. Tim Pray.
Good evening, Russell County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time. It'll just take a few minutes of your time. I think I sent this to Mr. Lester. You probably got the information in your packet, so I'm not going to read that to you. You can read yourself. But actually, if you did look at that, we serve four counties. We are a state nonprofit. We get a donation of $25,000 in Buchanan, and we get a donation of $13,000 in Tassau because we have offices in those locations. The Tassau office serves Tassau and Russell County. The office in Grundy serves Buchanan and Dixon. What we are, we are, there's 17 independent living centers across the state, and we serve these four counties. Our goal is to assist anyone with a disability, and I think it's, we gave maybe 20 examples of some things we do. We work in all three Russell County schools. We work in Homemaker, Castlewood, and Lebanon High Schools. We can also work with elementary kids, and we have with a few in Russell County. For example, a parent says they have got a first grader. He has, he's diagnosed with, let's say autism, and he has a bouncing problem. He's just got all kinds of problems going on here or she. Can you all do a ramp? Help me get my child in and out so he can go to hospital. Rescue squads can pick him up. And, you know, that's just one example, and that's what we do. We do a lot of ramps. We do, we're in all the schools helping teenagers mostly get their driver's license. You know, everything's fast-paced in education now. And a kid with a learning disability just can't keep up, even in driver's ed, learning the book. So we do private tutoring sessions. I have two employees who come to Russell County schools, all three high schools at least once a month. We try and go there twice a month. We work real closely with Marlene Board, Karen Clay, and it used to be Celeste Rutherford when she retired. And two of those ladies are on our board. We have board directors, and Russell County is represented by those two ladies, and they do a wonderful job. And one church we've partnered with, and I don't know if you all go there, but if you do, I can't thank you 20,000 times, is Rosedale Baptist. They've partnered with us, and they volunteer and do all the ramps for us. We buy the materials, and those guys volunteer and do ramps. They do probably two ramps a month. And that saves us, you know, if we had to get a contractor, you do a 20-foot ramp, you're out $3,000 for labor. And if that's the case, we couldn't do ramps. So they probably do 20, 25 ramps a year. And they're great partners. They're the best partner we have in the four county area. And like I said, you know, if you look through your packet, you can see some information there, and I'm not going to read it to you, but this is demographic, we have to a 704 report for the state, and that's just demographic information. The only thing I guess I can point out to you, if you look at page two on that 704 report, it shows you the breakdown of who we help, how many current consumers we have in these counties. Buchanan has 113. Like I said, it's Grundy office, and if you've got office in county, now you won't have more people come by or call. But Russell County is our second biggest county in helping people. We're up to 87, Tassau 67, and Dixon 17. And Dixon's kind of not many people, and we don't have an office over there, and it's, I guess, the most rural county out of the four, so we don't do a whole lot in Dixon County but some. But Russell County, this is my seventh year. I'm a retired educator, principal, all that stuff. But in my seventh year, Russell County's probably 300%. When I first took over, it was like maybe 15 people been serving in Russell County. So we got in these schools, and then word of mouth helped give it to the parents and grandparents. So we have five, six phone calls a day from Russell County wanting some kind of service. And so like I say, you see the service we provide, and we are nonprofit. We only, we're only seven employees, two employees in Tassau, five in Buchanan, only three full-time employees. We've got four part-time employees. And we try to spend, we talk to every dollar we can into service to consumers, is what we call it. We're serving consumers. That's what we're here for, to help the, help the people who are disabled. And we work with all the nursing homes. We work with nursing home in Russell County also. So we're, we're a heavy presence over here. We'd like to be more, and we might get that 87 up to 187. So I'm just sure not, of course, you asked me a question, I mean, I take any question. I'm just sure not asking if, if there is, if you all do see there is a need to fund the sun, help us out, you know, if you can't, I understand that completely. And we'll still be over here. We'll be fighting just as hard as we always did. But if you could help us out a little bit, mainly, I guess the reason I'm coming now and not four or five years ago, of course, everybody knows the price of lumber. I mean, a 20-foot ramp, just for example, used to be $1,100. Just the materials now that are going 19. So we've had about a 60%, 7% jump in materials. You know, when you drive, the guy who comes over here, he drives from Tassau, so you go from Tassau to Castlewood, that's a pretty good little jump. Tassau, you know, Lebanon. And our youth, our youth transition team, which goes to schools, of course, they come from Grundy, so Grundy to Castlewood is a good little jump. So gas is increasing and all that, but that's, I guess, the reason why I'm coming now. You may say, why didn't you come over here five years ago? Or why even year it out? You know? But that's the reason I'm here now. Our costs have just increased, and we get state funding, and like I said, we get the fund, we get a donation, Tassau and Russell, I'm sorry, Tassau and Buchanan Supervisors. And we get just a little small federal, not very much federal, all. The federal money is set aside trying to keep people out of nursing home. If someone, if they'll get a ramp, they go in a nursing home. They can't get out of the house. So we, that money goes for that. Or if someone's in a nursing home, and they rehabilitate, and they can come home, we'll make that house accessible where it needs to get them out of nursing home. I know one guy in Russell County we helped, he was a small guy, and he, you know, you're all like we are in Buchanan. There's no accessible housing hardly. So we had to go in. We do grants. We do a lot of grants, and we can get zero interest loans, sometimes one percent interest loan. And all his kitchen utilities had to be lowered down, and he couldn't, even Rich's stove. So we put him in like a walk-in, walk-in stove, like three feet from ground. And so those are type of things we can do too. So we do a lot of, we do a lot of grant writing. If we can't do it, we team up about 40 agencies. We'll find somebody, what their need is, and all these agencies work together. Of course, the biggest ones, we all hear of Zapp last place, we work closely with them too. So we refer clients back and forth. So if we can't do it, we'll give it everything to find someone that can help that person. That's all I have.
I got a quick question for you, if it's okay. I know Jeff serves with us on Mountain Movers here in Russell County. And one of the things we've been discussing, and I've had a lot of phone calls throughout the whole area of Russell County, probably other counties, is a playground or filing an application or grant application for playground equipment for kids with disabilities. That's one of the things that we really need. I mean, we really need playground equipments-
That's accessible.
-that's accessible-
Yes, sir.
-to kids that are autistic, that these, this equipment, we actually looked it up. It's very expensive to be able to get and bring in and stuff. But I'd be willing, and I know Mountain Movers, because Steve is involved in Mountain Movers, would be willing to partner somehow with you guys. And I think if we was to make an investment in this opportunity-
Right.
-I would like to see, you know, whatever we were able to help or contribute through the budget, to look at all of our districts. We have in, like Castlewood, Lebanon, and Homemaker, we have areas that we could build these facilities, but we need, and I didn't have a clue how many kids that we have in our county that have disability issues or are autistic. One little, one lady that comes to all of our meetings, her little, her son's autistic, and her thing is, you know, they need a park, or they need somewhere to go that's secure, that gives them a little bit of time, and then they can let the children play, or, you know, have some sort of guidance, or maybe partner with Mountain Movers to have some sort of volunteer service that can give them a break. And I have a lady that's got three kids that are autistic up in Rosedale that she don't, she said she can't even go to the grocery store. She don't have any help. She can't get assistance, you know, and it's very trying on people like that. And I didn't have a clue until, you know, we learned this-
When you get out there, yeah.
-when you get out there and you learn this stuff. But it'd be very critical to have some of these facilities for handicapped children.
Well, it's funny you mention that, because we just got, I almost said, two weeks ago, we just got down from Richmond, possible grants for playground accessibility in these areas. I think they're getting some federal money, I don't know if it's part of the COVID package, one of those, you know, all the packages they're sending down, it's part of one of those packages, and one was playful, accessible playground equipment in rural areas. So we're looking into that. So we want to, you know, it's one of those programs, it might have been the last, might have been when the President Biden passed that last one, We Shape America, or I'm not sure what they call them. There's missing many of those. But it's, it's in there. So we're looking at writing grants for that. If we do, we will include, of course, our four counties for that, so I can contact-
What's our next meeting? I'm not sure. I think our Mountain Movers meeting is, I think it's always the third Monday.
We, we had a representative come to Mountain Mover one time.
Okay.
All of it is Mr. Van Dock and Mr. Hesse.
Well, yeah, we've just now really tried to get started back. You know, the COVID has set everything shut down, so our last meeting, we didn't have a hat of people there, but this next meeting, I think we're going to try to open it up, try to get back into service.
Yeah, if you invite us, we'll be, we'll be glad to come.
Sure.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
No more questions or? I'll leave these brochures with Mr. Lester. Pretty much the same information I have. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes. This is for our regular June 7th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, David. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next is the minutes of the June 17 reconvened meeting. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
So move.
David, thank you.
Second.
Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the approval of our expenditures in our packet. Do we have a motion to accept our expenditures?
So move, Madam Chair.
Steve?
Second.
Second from Lou. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is our committee appointment boards, the first one we have.
Madam Chair, before we do that, we have talked about this concept, one appointment for board members for all these committees, and everybody I thought was pretty much in agreement. And I would really like to make a motion to get that done before we start into all these appointments.
Katie's going to discuss that with us.
Well, can we table these appointments until we do some?
I, I think probably the easiest thing to do is just, I guess, if you want to just amend the agenda to let me go ahead and discuss this, I have a proposed language that you'd asked me to draft last time, instead of moving all the appointments to after.
Okay.
Okay. So Steve, would you like to amend the agenda again? And we'll let Katie speak at this time on this.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Steve, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, David, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Katie, would you like to discuss the amendment?
Yes. The bylaws that you have in place now, Article 7 is called Appointment to Committees, and just talks about how the chairman can appoint committees, but that you will otherwise pass by majority vote your appointments to authorities, boards, and commissions. This would be an additional paragraph, the language I've drafted here, and it says, to the extent not contrary or otherwise controlled by law, because you do have some authorities that are, for instance, the IDA, you could have less number, but it's beneficial to you to have that extra two people from Lebanon and have that cooperation with the town of Lebanon. And then there's some authorities we may have to look at that have limitations on, on the number, so that's why I put in, that would, that would say that, so not otherwise contrary to law. All authorities, boards, and commissions shall consist of seven members, which shall be appointed by a majority vote of the Board of Supervisors. Each board member will nominate an individual to serve. Should a board member's nominee fail to receive approval, the board member shall be allowed to nominate an alternative candidate until the vacancy is filled. Authorities, boards, and commissions in existence as of the date of this amendment shall not have members removed from that board to comply with this provision. Rather, the vacancies shall not be filled until the membership is reduced to seven members. It would be my advice that if you do decide to go forward with this, that you wouldn't remove members that still have time on their terms. I think that would be the best move for the board.
Well, I think it was their intention, as appointments come up, we can, we can do that. I looked at it, I looked down the list, we've got 18 of our group, Boards, Committees, Authorities that have less than the seven board members, so those would be just nominated by general election, nomination election. We've got two that already have seven, which is Russell County PSA and the, and the Russell County Curitism Commission, which we did that intentionally. And then we've got five that have more than seven, which is the Community Policy Management Team, which may require more than seven, because I think there's some that are required on that.
They are required. Excuse me, I didn't, yeah, Steve, they are required. It is to include all agencies that would have a person, you know, any need services for that person.
Then we've got Highway and Safety Commission, which has about, I think, 10 or 15 on it. The IDA has nine, but two of those are required by the town, so we may be okay on the IDA.
I don't, I don't know that they're required, but we are allowed to do that under the code section, and then we get that extra benefit of the cooperation of the town.
I thought, when I read statute, it should, shall be appointed by-
Well, they would appoint them, but I don't know that you have to have nine. I think that's an option, but, but they appoint them.
Yeah, well, I don't think we'd have to change that number. And then the Planning Commission has, I think, 10 members on it. And Library Board has a bunch on it, so like 10 or 15.
Well, let me make another suggestion, I'm sorry, a suggestion. You may want to change, you know, I put shall consist of seven members, because that's kind of what we talked about, but maybe you want to say shall consist of a maximum of seven members, and add that language. Because I, and I guess that's another question we may have to deal with the situation, if you do have less than, less than seven, and you're not required to, and you can have more, do you want to have more? Do you want to keep it at five, for instance? I mean, I guess that's something you need to decide as well.
I think if they're functioning like they are now, the idea is not to have so many people, you know?
I've got a question too, as far as, what we had discussed is equal representation per district, I guess, and, and we have an at-large member, but equal representation, that each board member would have the ability to pick somebody from their district to represent it, and I don't see that in here listed. It'd just be going back to the same, you know, just if you had a majority vote, you just elect whoever.
Well, on, on anything less than seven, you know, unlike, some of these, some of these authorities don't have two members.
Oh, I know, I understand that. Yeah, I understand that. I'm just talking about the ones that have seven.
Yeah.
That would represent each.
Well, yeah, I, I think that's what we intend. Am I right, Katie? That each supervisor would have one appointment.
Yes, I mean, I can add additional language to say that they have to be from your district, but I just put in there that you would each get to select one, and then it has to be approved by the whole board. Now-
I personally think that each supervisor have appointed person representing their district, and if they can't, if that supervisor cannot come up with anyone that's willing to serve from his district, then you pick someone from another district. We always had that experience in the past. Now, when you come to the IDA board, which I'm Planning Commission, which I am on, Kirby Mezzola said if we reduce that down to seven, there could be times that we would not have enough people to have a meeting. We wouldn't have a forum. And he said that could be very critical when we're dealing with plaques and things, and it could hold up problems for people, you know, trying to deal with those situations.
Well, my response to that is, we need to appoint people who are committed to attending these meetings, you know, somebody who's willing to attend a meeting, you know. I mean, there are times when you can't. I understand that emergency situations, but, you know, you, you can look down the list of people to attend, some of them, on some of these meetings never attend. So I think we just need to hone it down to a board that's a number that's manageable.
Well, I can, I can say that during this pandemic, we've had a limited number, place someone be, be a 10 on the phone or otherwise, but still, Kirby's been with that, been a chairman of that Planning Commission for years, and I think he knows pretty well circumstances that he has encountered through the years, that there'd be times, maybe a funeral, maybe a sickness, and different things that would cause enough members to not be present that they could conduct events as they normally would.
Well, and I had a motion prepared, and it's very similar to what Katie has, has, has prepared as well. And I'm going to read it, and I think it's pretty much in alignment with what, what Katie has indicated. So I want to make a motion to Russell County, that all Russell County committees, authorities, boards, where the applicable articles and/or bylaws of that board, authority, or committee does not specify a number of members, that the number of members on those boards, authorities, or committees be set at the number of the elected members of the Russell County Board of Supervisors, which is currently seven. And that one appointment to each respective board, authority, or committee be made by each supervisor from the citizens residing in the voting district that that supervisor represents. And in the case of the supervisor at large, said supervisor at large may make appointments from any citizen of Russell County. And that on any board's authorities or committees where the number of members required is larger than the number of members of the Russell County Board of Supervisors, that each board member will have one appointment to the board, authority, or committee from the voting district that each supervisor represents. And the remaining number of members on that board or authority or committee will be appointed as specified in their articles or bylaws, or by any applicable legislation associated with that board, the IDA, committee, or authority, or by general nomination election of the entire Board of Supervisors. And that on any board's authorities or committees where the number of members required is smaller than the number of members on Russell County Board of Supervisors, that those members will be appointed by general nomination and election by the entire Board of Supervisors from any citizen in Russell County, which is, I think, is basically what you have said.
It's close, but I mean, I've, I've listened to it, but I mean, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable giving, you know, a complete legal opinion on it, just, just from just hearing it one.
How does, how does Ford feel about it? We've talked about it.
I was going to say, let's have a discussion about that.
Discussion?
Well, I'll, I'll make that motion, and if somebody will second it-
I'll say.
Okay, David, second it, and open for discussion.
Okay.
Well, I'm just looking at the highway. Isn't Mr. O'Quinn the state trooper that, so how-
Yeah, that was, that was going to be one of mine.
How would he be? He's a, he's a-
Well, there are some people who will be required to be on there.
And then Mr.-
And there are some who are on there that never attend.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Who are supposed to be there.
And, and by the way, District 2 does not have a representative on the highway committee. No, no, he's not, he's in Tim's district.
Yeah.
He represents her district on that committee.
Well, physically, he's not in my district.
I just think, and it's going to take a transition period before we get all this done, but we've got to start somewhere to get this thing-
Well, I think that one of the things we did in 2016 is, we said we thought we needed to do this, because it was totally unequal when we all were out here. And I have personally no problem with this at all, I don't think, as long as, as we can make it work. And while you're at it, this may add to the hornet's nest, I don't know, but part of the town of St. Paul is, one-third of the town of St. Paul is in Russell County, doing business in Russell County, but they have no representation at the table. Now, I can, I can appoint someone from the town of St. Paul, I guess, per se, but I think they would need to be from Russell County to represent. So is that a seat at the table? I don't know. They have their own IDA, they have other things. Now, this may muddy the water, but there's business being done in that third piece of the county. That's our county and our tax base.
I think that's a decision by each supervisor, you know?
That's right.
If you want to appoint somebody from, who has a business in that, as long as they live in Russell, as long as they're a resident of Russell County. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, just, so just because we're having this discussion, it needs to be aired, some of these, these things needs to come out. So that's a very good point, and I, I wouldn't expect anybody that lived in Wise County to serve on a committee, but to be represented, you would have to have, do we have to include, be inclusive of that in the language somehow? I don't know. I know we're doing, where we've got the Lebanon piece on that as a town.
The Lebanon, that was legislated, that was, it's in the legislature. I mean, we really can't do much about it.
No, and I don't mean to do that either, but I'm just asking that question there, because our IDAs are, are commingling, our planning commissions are commingling, they're working together across boundaries, much like the town of Lebanon does. So that's just a question I'm going to throw out there for consideration and thought.
My understanding, the reason that they did that for the town of Lebanon at that time, the county was always in doing the revenue anticipation notes, and I know for a fact, when the regional jail came up, the county, quite frankly, almost, Russell County almost caused it to go belly up, because they always were in, you know, negative because of the rate of revenue anticipation, which cost them about $100,000 a year, and thank goodness we finally got away from that. But the reason that was done is the town of Lebanon is the only one in the county that had the bonding capacity at that time.
Of 2 million? It's plainly states in that code of 2 million dollars.
And it was read in the legislation that they had two members, you know, to protect-
And to get that two members for 2 million. And now you have another piece, that just happens to be in my district, that has- happens to be in my district that has major borrowing power too, that, and I, and I'm, I'm saying this because I'm stepping on council's toes here, but we need borrowing power too.
Well, I, I think that's something the IDA itself probably ought to consider, because, you know, they have their own bylaws and such, and we can appoint, but we can't, they, I guess we can approve their bylaws, or, or they do their own bylaws.
They do their own.
They do their own bylaws. There's, there's nothing in it.
So that's decisions that they would have to make on, on their own, which I'm perfectly comfortable with letting, you know, do that consideration, you know, anywhere you can do any kind of bonding, you know, if they wanna come up and bond something in Castlewood, I'd be thrilled.
Well, we have, there's been times that our attorney has suggested such things as that, and, and so I think that's a, it's creative idea to get business done and get things done, and, but I'm not gonna step on town council's toes, and I, I won't reveal the borrowing power that the little town of St. Paul has, but Mr. Lester and I have had that conversation.
Katie, you have any other comments, Forrest?
Uh, going back to the members not attending, Steve, so, I'd say that we need to make some kind of regulation, that if they miss so many meetings within a year, I'm actually off the board. I'd say three or four. If they can't, if they can't attend, and you have those meetings monthly, I'd say they don't. What use does that on the owner? What benefit on the owner if they aren't attending the meeting?
Well, you have people that's not attending a year.
The highway department only meets ten times a year. Crete's ten, they only, they only meet ten times.
They, let's say this, two-thirds of the meetings, they ought to be attending, or, oh, they have a good reason for not attending.
Is, is that not something that has to be addressed by each individual group? Their bylaws and their bylaws?
Yes, I mean, the only, the only bylaws I'm aware of that have to be approved by you all are the PSAs, and that's in the articles in the corporation, but that's, and, that's the only one I'm aware of, but I haven't read every board and authority's bylaws.
May I interject? From the library's bylaws, the problem we discovered occasionally was, you appoint them, but we don't have the authority to get rid of them if they don't come. So like, the library board would, the chair would write the person a letter, and then basically come to you with a letter saying, please appoint someone who will attend. So that isn't our bylaws.
If this goes through, Kelly, you'll only have seven members.
Yeah, and that would be.
And they will be members that will commit to attend.
Well, and we haven't had that problem in a few years, but, you know, that, that's what you're saying is an example. That isn't our bylaws, but that if you don't attend, we'll ask to replace you, but we obviously can't replace you. You have to.
Well, I personally, I think this is a step in the right direction. It'll take, it may take several years before we can, you know, bring it to fruition, but nobody will be knocked off a board, but when appointments come due, we'll have to ask Lonzo to look at the location, we'll have to find out where each individual board member lives, and ultimately we will get down to one appointment for board supervisors, and we will have equal representation throughout the county. So I would, I stand to that motion, or call for a vote down in the chair.
The, the only other thing I'll say is, according to your bylaws, since this was just given to the members, it does say that the, a copy of the proposed amendment has to be sent with a notice prior to the meeting, but then right below it, it says that the bylaws may be suspended in whole or part upon the unanimous vote of the board members present relating to any matter. So you, what you would need to do is just have a subsidiary motion to suspend the bylaws as to that notice requirement, and vote on the motion.
Stick that in, please. So it's, I understand all that, but, but like tonight, have, have we spoken with these members? They do or they don't want to be back on? I mean, we've got people here that, okay, Castlewood's Cleveland, Mr. Jesse's Lebanon, Eugene Ferguson's Lebanon, Tony Maxfield, Honaker, Barbara Cox, Honaker, Henry Stinson, Honaker, Carl's from Cleveland, and Emery I has not, I have not replaced. He's in my district. He's deceased. He, that, that's fall off. We didn't do it. So have you all spoken? Do you, I mean, are you gonna find out who wants to be?
Didn't even know this was coming up until I saw the board package. I haven't spoken to any of them. I'm not saying, I don't think we should appoint anybody until we resolve this issue and decide what we're going to do.
This ran our packet. Wastement.
We tabled.
We tabled it from Wastement.
We tabled it, right, yeah.
So you should have seen these guys.
Why, I should have what?
You should have seen these guys from Wastement. It was in our packet.
I saw that, but I'm not, I don't want to even appoint any of them until we resolve this one issue and decide what we're going to do. I mean, it's, it, all you do is muddy the, we make those appointments, and you just muddy the water even further. You know, it's gonna take that much longer to get this situation straightened down. So maybe the best thing we can do is, is table these, and with this, if I present this motion to the board tonight.
That's definitely, that's sufficient. There's no amount of notice. It just says notice prior to the meeting, but again, if there's a motion to, to suspend the bylaws in a second, but it does require a unanimous vote for that.
Yeah, yeah, to suspend the bylaws.
So we need to make that motion first?
If, if, if Steve wants to.
If we wanna vote on it tonight.
We're gonna have to have a motion to suspend our bylaws, and.
Can, can we go ahead and make that motion while this motion's on the table? Okay, I'll make a motion to s- suspend the bylaws. On the notice of requirement of the amendment.
You're talking about suspending the bylaw, the board?
Our county, our county board bylaws.
Not each individual IDA, PSA, or whatever.
No, our bylaws, our bylaws, so that we can, so that we can vote on this, because we should have seen this before the meeting. We should have had prior notice, and we didn't get it. So that's what he's asking. He's making a motion to amend to our bylaws to notify, so that we can vote on that, and then we'll turn around and vote on his motion that he's presented here. He's giving us a motion to suspend our bylaws.
I'll second that.
And ten.
I'll second that. Because I agree, we, if, if we're going to do this, which we've all agreed to, we, we need to put these off until we can examine and choose. We did.
So I mean, equal representation for a district.
You need to, you need to do an analysis on it and see who's representing what district. And these, these people will continue to serve until we can do something.
So nobody's like, not, not, nothing's gonna cease to.
Their motion is.
Okay, we've got a motion seconded, or any other discussion on the subsidiary. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right, now we'll get back to Steve's original motion, the first motion he made that he read, and David seconded. It is for the committee to make the motion that we make our boards all seven.
And I'll give this to Katie, and she.
I'll just give it incorporated.
Yeah. We've had a motion by Steve, a second by David, we've discussed it.
No, more, just, one more, one more. Okay, on the document that you've just handed to the attorney, is, can we vote on this contingent on her approval of the wording, et cetera, on this?
Well, me and my motion to include that statement, that pending review of the county attorney in concurrence that is acceptable and legal.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Thank you, I'm done.
All right, all in favor of the amended motion that we have this pending county, that our county attorney's opinion. So all in favor of.
Aye.
Okay, Katie, is that all we need to do? Is let you review on that matter, on that note. Okay.
And table.
Next, okay, Steve.
I'll make a motion that we table all these appointments until, until probably next month, when we get a report on, on who is represented and how each district's represented.
And also, we have one board member that has a dad or a family. It's not in attendance. And in all respect, probably good to have us all here at the same time.
Okay, all right, so now we have on the table a motion to table all these appointments. Steve, David seconded, all those in favor of tabling all these appointments until next month?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Now, all the way down to citizens comment. Kevin, would you check out there? Thank you. All right, first one we have is Kelly McBride Dill.
Hello, thank you for the time. Just wanted to let you know, I did give each of you a quarterly report, which actually is the, effectively the end of the fiscal year report. We are back pretty much to normal. We had a great program, Bubble Brigade, which is the definition of good, clean fun. It was soap bubbles, and the kids absolutely adored it. The adults adored it. So we were just really excited. So if you know anybody that, of any age, we've got some things going on, from book groups to crafts to whatnot, for summer reading for another few weeks. Thank you.
Next on the Citizens Public Science Sheet is Amanda Thomas. You'll state your name, your address, and go back.
I'm Amanda Thomas. My address is 10729 Red Bud Highway. That's in Honaker. And we are here on behalf of Star Ministries. We want to thank all of you for your time. Our program started twenty-three years ago with one family needing assistance. My dad, Ted Blankenship, and Gary Ward, that was WLRB radio. This lady came to them and asked them to help with Christmas, and of course, we did. At the time, I was a teenager and thought this is crazy, but I loved it, and we have continued it ever since. My dad unfortunately passed away in 2010, and we have never once missed a Christmas since then for kids. This is my team. They're all here with me. We've grown up tremendously in the last four years. They come in a 501(c)(3) and can't wait to grow more. In 2017, my friends and I felt it was time to step up and do more for our community. Our community is not only Russell County. We serve Buchanan County, Tassle County, Dickiston County. We take care of a lot of kids and a lot of families. We have countless volunteers that help with clothing, furniture, working our auctions, sorting clothing, picking up furniture, or just being in ear to listen to people. We provided people with the community at service hours, and we, we're continuing that. We have someone coming tomorrow to do more community service. We provided community dinners during our time. Thanksgiving 2020, during the pandemic, we were able to provide for over, over four hundred meals, and that was a tiny stove. So we would be excited to have a bigger kitchen. We offer same, the same programs that Elk Garden Ministries offer. We offer an emergency food pantry in hopes of going back to a full-time pantry. We give out free clothing that to anyone that needs it. We've provided furniture and appliances to those that have lost everything in a house fire. Many times, we're called upon because someone's appliance is broken, and they simply don't have the means to repair it or purchase a new one, so we provide them with one. At the beginning of each school year, we have a back-to-school program that provided two, twenty to a hundred children with three outfits of clothing, socks, shoes, underwear, plus their school supply list from the schools. When Christmas time comes, we reach out to members in our community for sponsorships. We try to give each child a Christmas otherwise they wouldn't have for the entire county. We were able to find enough sponsors to provide up to fifteen hundred children in Russell County with Christmas over the years. The kids receive a complete outfit of clothing, which includes shirt, pants, socks, shoes, underwear, a coat or a hoodie, and one wish list item. We've helped the Red Cross with many fires this year. We hosted, we host an auction two times a week to provide most of our services. We have donated to several families that either lost a family member, or they've been hospitalized. These are just a few examples of what we do. We can't wait to imagine the possibilities that we can continue doing for the community. Anybody have any questions?
I think you answered mine. You still do send out the letters and ask people to buy the Christmas presents for the children, right?
We usually go business to business, and then we do send out letters asking for donations and things, yes.
Because I know my little women's group always gives you money.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Well, I think what you're doing is commendable, and.
Well, thank you.
And I'd love to see you come to a Mountain Movers meeting.
Yes, yes. If I had more time in my day, I would love to.
Six o'clock, Monday, six, third Monday of the month, at the government.
One of us will get there.
Well, yeah, just come and share, because the whole concept of Mountain Movers is, people come, if they work together, they get a lot more done.
Exactly.
And, you know, like the gentleman Ford had talked about, partnership, President Abbot, so we've partnered with them through Mountain Movers, and Rod Wicker does a dude, and Woody Scott does a dude, and you're doing a dude, and you just fit right in. So, and there might be, you know, you never know what kind of resource you might be able to come up with. And we have talked about giving school, and I guess that we talked about a little bit further in the agenda, so.
Okay.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, any other citizens? Yeah, just, just may I step back and state your name and address, please?
Sorry, I just got off work. Michelle Vance, 99 Willow Springs Drive. I just wanted to make sure I got here for this comment period, because I wanted to make sure that Amanda had enough representation here. What she does for this county is truly amazing. If we had more of this generosity from where I come from, I might not be living here today. I might be in, still in Maryland, working with people up there. But it's not like that there. The other thing I wanted to say is, when you do discuss it later on in your agenda, please remember, she is a small organization. She is nonprofit. Everything is donated. Amanda doesn't take anything for herself. None of these ladies do. They all work very hard doing what they do. And basically, I wanted to say, I just wanted you to make sure that you take that into consideration.
Anyone else? Any other folks with public comment? Say no, we'll move on. Constitutional officers reports and requests? None here? All right, Air County Attorney reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item that I have is the county's emergency ordinance for the continuity of government services. I think we kind of discussed this, that that ordinance will, is no longer needed now, thankfully, and it's time to repeal that ordinance. So that's all I would need, as far as action from the board tonight, is just a motion to repeal that ordinance.
I'll make it. I'll second.
Oh, shoot. Any discussion?
You must have been sitting on the horn over there.
All right.
I was waiting on that one.
All right, all those in favor of the, the killing of the emergency ordinance for the county? Anyone opposed? I don't think so.
Thank you, and we've already addressed number two under my reports. The third item I have is really a request for the chair, the chair at this point. We have received two responses to the request for qualifications on Project Jonah. As the boards are aware, this is a project that we are doing jointly with Buchanan and Tassle County, so I, I do want to involve them in the process of that selection, and so I think it would be, ultimately, it will be our vote, who, which way to go, but I think it would be beneficial for the chair to appoint a committee to work with Buchanan and Tassle, board members and, and/or county administrators in selecting the qualified applicant for this.
Okay, all right, at that time, I'll appoint myself, and I'll ask Mr. Lovelace, if you care to do that, because TM is certified through the procurement office for the state of Virginia, so I'll ask TM, if you care to serve with me, sir?
I will.
Thank you.
The fourth, the fourth item that I have is the send disposal site purchase. I know the board had previously approved this at the July, or, excuse me, the June 7th meeting, however, I do think there was a request. However, I do think there was a request for a little bit of additional purchase price, and so I did prepare a deed for that, and the purchase price for that property would be $37,500. I've got the deed prepared, but I'm still working on finalizing the title, so you can go ahead and approve that subject to a final title approval by myself.
Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'd like to make that motion, please.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ors. All right, any discussion? Are there all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Number five is the Cleveland High School property. There's a potential industry that may be interested in that, and so at the board's pleasure, if we do wish to convey that property, we would need to set a public hearing on that matter.
So, need a motion to set our public hearing for this month?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you need a time?
Ors, at our next meeting?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Okay, I made my motion at six PM.
At next meeting, all right, Ors. Steve made the motion, Ors Sagnet, and it'll be six at our next meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Next.
The same thing for givens, and that property, what's been contemplating, my understanding, is a lease, but you would still need to have a public hearing before you could lease that property. So, if the board would like to consider leasing that building, then we would need to set a public hearing for that as well.
I'll make that motion to do it at the same time. We do it the next.
All right, any further discussion? Right, our motion for next month's meeting at six also a public hearing. All those in favor?
And the last item under, that I have for the board's consideration is relating to the opioid litigation that the county is involved in, the class action suit that the law firm in Missouri is handling for us. They need approval and authority to proceed to vote yes to the proposed plan in bankruptcy court.
Some of those, Madam Chair? Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
David, any discussion? All those in favor? Next on the agenda is our county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator reports, of course, is the American Relief Rescue Plan, Relief Plan of 2021. This is the federal money that came down to assist the counties during this time after the CARES Act. Of course, we just got rid of the declaration. This is to help the counties, the cities, and municipalities, counties, counties get back on their feet. There was projects during that time, lost revenue. We had to sustain, you know, help Russell County citizens during that time to get through these pandemic quarantines. We incurred a lot of cost during that time. One of the, the cost is broken down in the American Relief Plan is, of course, the first one is infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband, okay? The second is, you know, for stabilization for the locality, for, you know, lost revenue, and it will be also to pick up any reoccurring COVID, especially if there's another variant that comes in. This gives a sustainability on this to take it. The CARES Act is a little different, American Relief Plan is a little different than the CARES. This is appropriated over a two-year period, so they're stretching it out to keep you sustained until they tell you, you know, with the financial hump. We, Russell County, received $5,164,019, but that, again, is over a two-year period. Our first allocations appropriations was $2,582,009.50. So, of course, I'll be going into some of the first things that we had to take care of later in the time. As you can see here, that, of course, legislation is 151 pages long of dues and dones and exemptions and requirements. It's federal money. So, we've got to take time in planning and making sure we get our Russell County infrastructure back up on the ground, so. Second on the county administrator reports and requests is the parole office that is moving or has moved. Actually, they're right here behind us right now. They, as you can see, we've changed some of the things that are behind us in the offices now. So, they give us official notification of move to the board supervisors. That's the official date. We have appreciated the partnership with the county over the years and enjoyed the opportunity to be in close proximity to the Russell County courthouse. District number 17, Senior Probation slash Payroll Office, Jennifer Herbert, will return all relevant keys, and this will come effect of July the 1st, 2021. We thank the county for its continued assistance during this time. So, again, we're out here in the government building now in the government facility as far as the parole office. Next, of course, I don't know if y'all have seen on the, we passed the Russell County Litter Control Ordinance back in May with a start date of July to give all residents an opportunity to clean up, get ready. So, again, this is on my reports to, you know, five of one, effective July the 1st, these new requirements as far as litter control is in place. And as you can see, these has three, four different kinds of classifications for us, penalties and the requirements of keeping the exterior residential and commercial property clean. So, if you need to look at it, take a look at the website, take a look at the Facebook. We're publishing it and keeping it up, so. But also, next is the county administrator request is for a resolution. This is for the naming, this is for us, County Board of Supervisors, a resolution, and this is naming of Route 58 location at the Castlewood U.S. Post Office in Russell County, Virginia, as the Sergeant First Class Fred Taylor Memorial Highway. And being a veteran, you know, I like doing these. Whereas, on July 11, 1965, Sergeant First Class Fred Taylor, U.S. Army Special Forces, the Green Berets, Detachment V-52, Project Delta, where he made the ultimate sacrifice. Project Delta was a deep cover classified operation in Vietnam with U.S. Special Forces personnel training and leading indigent regular, irregular forces in the conduct of long-range reconnaissance patrols deep within enemy-controlled territory within the Republic of Vietnam. Their mission included locating enemy units, gathering intelligence, bomb damage assessments, artillery airstrike coordination, special purpose raids, and conducting harassing and deception missions. Project Delta had the capability of deploying into any tactical zone within South Vietnam. Whereas, on July 11, 1965, Master Sergeant Henry J. Gallant and Sergeant First Class Fred Taylor were the leaders of an eight-man long-range reconnaissance patrol. The team was inserted by helicopter into its area of operation gathering intelligence north of Highway 19 prior to the large-scale allied operation to reopen that route. At approximately 1,600 hours on July 13, 1965, the team was ambushed by enemy forces of unknown size as it moved through the jungle foliage on the south side of the mountain, approximately five miles of Highway 19. The first initial burst of enemy gunfire caused the team to be split up with Fred Taylor, Henry Gallant, and South Vietnamese soldiers in one group and seven other team members in the other. Sergeant First Class Taylor immediately established radio contact with friendly forces, informing them of the team's location and requesting an emergency extraction. As the intense battle raged around them, Henry Gallant suffered a gunshot wound to the stomach, although its severity is not known. Last time MSG Gallant, Master Sergeant, and Staff Sergeant Taylor were seen by the surviving indigent patrol members. Fred Taylor was helping Henry Gallant into the surrounding jungle as hostile fires pressed toward them. Once extraction was requested, a search and rescue SAR operation conducted for the missing team members. Over the next few days, SAR personnel using both air and ground assets successfully recovered five of the indigent team members alive, but were unable to locate any trace of Sergeant First Class Taylor or Master Sergeant Gallant or the other three indigent personnel. At the time, the formal search was terminated. Henry Gallant and Fred Taylor were recorded as missing in action. In July 1966, one year after the loss, a board of inquiry was convened to examine all known fact and circumstances surrounding the loss of Master Sergeant Gallant and Staff Sergeant Taylor. After examining the witnesses, debriefing statements, and other relevant information, the board determined the missing men's status should be altered to killed in action, body not recovered, K-I-A-B-N-R. Whereas, under Section 33.2-1312 of the Code of Virginia, authorizes Commonwealth Transportation Board to give suitable names to state highways, bridges, and interchanges to other transportation facilities and change the names of any highways, bridges, or interchanges or transportation facilities forming a part of the systems and state highways. And whereas, Section 33.2-213 provides, the Virginia Departmentation shall place and maintain appropriate signs indicating the names of the highway, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities be maintained, be named by CTV and requires the cost of producing and placing and maintenance. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Russell County, in accordance with section requirements in Section 33.2-33, 32, sorry, 33.2-212 of the Code of Virginia, does hereby request that the Commonwealth Transportation Board name the Route 58 location at the Castlewood U.S. Postal Office in Russell County, Virginia, as the SFC Fred Taylor Memorial Highway. Be it further resolved, the Russell County agrees to pay the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining the sign calling attention to this name. I need a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion, please.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Madam Chair, I would like to say, thank you, Mr. Lester, for reading that. We had an inquiry back in the fall from James McCoy, who actually lived right along there at the post office in Castlewood when he was growing up, and he has done a yeoman's work in research for this name and this man and trying to find his family, and it has been a long time coming, and I appreciate this board for supporting this to send it on to the CTV board. Thank you.
All right, all right.
Thank you, Madam. Next on the county administrator request is, of course, the, we always like these type of letters, the 2021 CDBG grant offer for the Belfast Extension Project Phase Three. We're on phase three now. So, we're finishing up phase two. This is phase three. On behalf of the Governor Northam, it gives pleasure to inform you that Russell County has been offered a community development BOP grant in the amount of $640,000 in support of the Belfast Waterline Extension Project Phase Three. This proposal was offered funding under the 2021 CDBG competitive round. So, I need a motion to accept the $640,000. I'll make it. Second.
Steve, thank you, second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? This is in my district, and it does continue the water line on up Mountain Road almost to the Tassell County line, and it's providing folks on Mountain Road water. Goes right past that.
And the good thing, it's all grant money.
Yes, it's all grant money. Thank goodness for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator reports is a contract with the Appalachian Council for Innovation in Russell County. This is a partnership with the Appalachian Council and Starlink for broadband services for the children that are within the county. These are one of the quadrants, as you can see. The cells is being defined as 60 accounts as defined SARA area. This is for all the hardware kits in a two-year service agreement upon 60 accounts that to be decided upon by the board supervisors in two of the quadrants. So, there is one quadrant tonight and one potential quadrant that will be available in January, February?
One in the main area?
September. No, the next.
Oh, yeah, the next will be September, yes.
September, yes, okay. The county will, this is an agreement for the 60 kids that are done by the school. This will be done by the county. I need approval for a motion on this contract with the Appalachian Council of Innovation with Starlink broadband services contract.
Okay. We'll take a motion for this and then for discussion. Do we have a motion for this?
I'll make the motion that we move forward with the Starlink contract.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, open for discussion and comments.
Have those 60 clients been determined before they're going to be located? Are they in unserved, underserved areas of the community?
So, as far as if they've been identified, first, there was a reach out to the school board to identify some schoolchildren that were underserved or non-served in Russell County before we even started this project. And so, yes, it will reach unserved and underserved. Again, it's going to be, we'll work closely with Mr. Lovelace and the school board to get those 60 that they choose, whichever ones they want to use to go to.
But those have not been pre-identified before the funding came to you?
They are identified in that we know that there's several in this region, okay, and several in the cell that you chose, okay, in that six and a half mile radius. So, we know that there's well over 60 in that six and a half mile radius.
Where is that, where is that area? Where is that area physically?
You got that, Lonzo? You got that, sir? It covers basically Lebanon West towards St. Paul. And the six and a half, I'm trying to think where the center point is, but I can't remember exactly where the center point is, but it's a six and a half mile radius.
That's 60, 60 customers for 200,000 in investment?
Yes.
That don't, the only thing about it is, see, I've got a lot of areas in my district desperate, desperate need of it.
And we've got, Starlink is telling us that we're going to be able to do more sales literally by September. We should be under contract for more sales. If you want more, we can get more.
But you're going to come back with more, more money?
Well, that kind of goes with it, but yes. But yeah, there is opportunity to get more, more of Russell County covered, absolutely.
Well, and you know, you know my district very well, so I'm desperate for help in my district, but, and all of us agree that this is what we need to do, is we can't shift the sales or anything around, can we, at this point in time?
We cannot. I asked, and they said, no, no, we can't do it. And I did ask.
But we have body money, because I'm with Cameron Plateau, and we have body money and Mr. Frieding can attest to this, to put this to the homes for the money that we've got with the body money. And so, what all of us are in a quandary over is, and I'm not trying to put you under a microscope, please forgive me, but what we're needing is, we need these children that have no way of getting service in three years.
Agreed.
Well, the problem is that we.
But our sale is not where we need it, Mr. Perry.
What we're going to do is duplicate services.
All you're doing is overlaying there and starting at service. See, here's the two quadrants. These are the two quadrants. I've already, I've already looked at it and mapped it out as far as the areas that already have, already have existing broadband access. So, all we're doing is really duplicating.
So all we're doing is really duplicating, unless you get into some area regions, you know, you have two wireless carriers, you have fiber optic carriers, you have all these carriers that's already in existence and fairly affordable. And if you look at the comparables and then these people will have to sign a two-year agreement, you know, to be able to get this, but we're paying for it.
According to the scatter diagram that we've got from Russell County schools, in that quadrant, there are several unserved or underserved students.
Yeah, but will they be served by this contract that has been approved, a $16 million contract within the next year and a half that's going to run fiber optics to these students? We don't know. There are areas that legitimately need this, like up on top Sandy Ridge, where you'll never get fiber there.
Yeah, in Daint, in Gravel Lake.
Those are the areas.
Corning Valley, the loop. Yes. Our folks...
Corning Valley is a good example.
Laurel Branch.
Help us out here, Mr. Purdy. We really want to do this, honest.
Okay. According to what we got from the school system, there are a lot of unserved right now that will be served come September if you do this.
They might be served come September, but the, or not Sunset, Point Broadband.
Yeah. And you actually, and like I'm with Mr. Christian here, I've had folks that live out past the school, that's grunch, two miles out of town. They're not going to be caught with this.
Are they in...
They're outside of that sale. They're toward the mountain, they're toward Clinch Mountain, and it's, you're missing a whole...
I didn't pick the circle.
No, we're not trying to shift. No, we're not trying to shift you, but I'm saying that was...
Let's pick into you, hopefully you'll speak to someone else.
Well, I tried. I did ask Starlink, but I spoke with them on the phone Thursday, last Thursday, if it was possible to ship the sale. I said, no. And I don't know what, there's nothing else I can do on that.
That's not going to benefit me at all in my district. And a lot of areas, I've been fighting tooth and nail to try to get something to these people that need it desperately. And these are in valleys and corridors that the satellite wouldn't help. Now, what we're talking about in these cells here is off more flat area region that is going to be served by fiber optics, there's no doubt. I mean, that's part of their initial plan to build out off of their backbone of their existing circuits that they have in existence, and I know where they're all at.
I understand.
Within that, within that sale, those 60 units in your sale, they can't, they can't move over either because the satellites are working agreed. Is that my understanding?
Basically, they are working in a, the cell is defined as a six and a half mile radius circle, okay? So it's 13 miles across, right? And they are based on the constellation of satellites that are flying over. And that's what they have programmed and have been placed based on the request. So again, I'm sure, I can't fathom that there's not 60 households somewhere in that circle that it doesn't make the business case to get fiber to them or some other means. I would find, just would find that amazing because it's always, it's like, you know, two miles off the road and yet you can't get to them, you know, without extreme cost. So I would struggle to think that there's not. And again, based on what we got from the school system, there were several that were well more than 60 that looked like they made the qualification.
Yeah, there's a lot, I mean, in county, but... I get everybody's concern that the quadrants basically cover areas that are either served or hopefully soon will be served. That's the problem. We need to, you know, we can't throw a couple hundred thousand dollars around to serve an area that broadband is, it's three months later going to come right back.
Or Scott Kenny telephones in that same area.
We need to identify the areas, and there are legitimate areas that we'll never be able to get to. We talked about this.
You're not going to Daint and Carterton in three to four years, according to Point Broadband.
And we've got a quadrant, there was another cell that covers Daint that is also lit up or will be lit up, that can cover Daint.
Can we get that one?
Yeah.
Without taking the other two?
You can get part of, because that one's a shared cell between Dickinson and Wise and...
So we could do that?
You can do, again, as part of, and I, again, that's a negotiation that you guys will have to work out between the other two counties as to how many of those cells you can or counties can get.
Okay.
It sounds like this needs to be a really a regional project that needs to be mapped out, how that the counties can partner together. I mean, I'm saying, but we've not conversated with Buchanan and Dickinson and those people.
I understand.
You see what I'm saying? I mean, if they'd be willing to split the cost...
Well, on that one particular cell, that one is there, yes. But the one that was selected is the one that was selected.
I think we need to have a conversation with those counties.
Hand point broadband.
Yeah, to see what's there.
So, excuse me, let me interrupt one more time. So if we would decide to go this route, we have the $200,000 from the American Recovery Act, correct, Mr. Longfellow, Lester?
Yes, ma'am.
And what else comes with that? Then what else are we responsible for?
Well, the $200,000 is per quadrant. As you see, each one of these is 200,000 for two years of service to kids that need internet service to be able to continue, you know, with the schools. That's, now, VCSDA has offered, they have got a grant for each county that is another 50,000 that could reduce this cost down to 150.
You tell me, I thought you said the school was doing one quadrant and the counties are doing one quadrant.
That's, that's been discussed. I can't speak for the school board though.
Eleven point seven million dollars. I think it would be identified, didn't you?
So the VCSDA grant came from the DH, Department of, or DHCD, I believe it was, yeah. And that money is, according to Jonathan, that they're, however long it's going to take for him to get here, I'm thinking, hopefully, in the next week or two. And we, as a council, we decided to try to be as equitable as can, so we said $50,000 for each county out of that 500,000. So you'll get that. I'm also in discussion with People Inc., who will be able to work with the individuals' accounts for subscription assistance, so they can do, as I understand it, maybe $100 for six months. So basically, they'll pay for 25% of the subscription for a few people, and I don't know how many people that would be that have to qualify and that sort of thing. But there is that. There's also the Department of Social Services with identifying those that are on staff program, and they're going to be able to contribute as well. So your $200,000 is coming down more and more as we find more and more money to help you with it, so.
So right now, we're talking per sale, without, we're leaving the school out?
Okay, per sale, right now, you're looking at $200,000 for the sale. Again, 50,000 of that's coming off because of VCSDA. So now you're down to 150. And the, if the American Rescue Funds cover that, then you're basically, as far as your operating budget, I guess that would be, that's real bad, wouldn't it? I know you've got other things to spend, but I get that, but I'm just saying...
It's not even that. As hard as we fought to get this agreement with Sunset Digital, who ultimately sold out to Point Broadband, to get all this internet service through Apple County, and the body money, 16 plus million dollars, it's over 40 altogether, that they're going to run fiber optics throughout Russell County, Dickinson, Buchanan and Tassel County, I don't want to relieve them of any obligation that they have to do that. And if we can identify some areas that we can be assured that they're not going to run into, and I know there are areas out there, we tried to talk to them about that, there's just areas that we'll never be able to run fiber optics to.
I've got two.
That are, that are probably, some of them are in those areas.
Laurel Branch and Horton Ridge.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some in that circle, based on the...
I don't see none of mine, I think.
Well, I understand, I'm talking about within the circle that was selected.
I understand. And who did the selection? I need to talk to them.
No, see, the only two main quadrants are in the concentration of the county.
Now, the ones that are here like this is the ones that we referred are shared. They're shared by either Wise County, Dixon County, Tassel County or Buchanan.
Have you got Tassel's man?
No, that's proprietary information, and I tried to get it. He wouldn't let me have it.
Route 67, Route 67 there, you know, I mean, I'm real familiar with Route 67.
There's an Indiana involved here, so, you know, I'm sorry.
See, it's a, it's a sharing situation on the fringes of these cells.
Right.
And that's where we need the help.
Well, and again, okay, so if it's on those fringes, you can still get to the fringes. It's not that it's all got to be within, you know, right close to the center, it's ill with the fringes, that's the whole point of the six and a half miles, it will reach that far out. So again, I can't fathom that there's not some places, at least 60 inside that circle that doesn't, is not going to be able to make the business case to get to. Just like we got a business case in Daint, it's the same thing. That's the reason why that fifth cell that they said, here, you can have one, was that was, you know, because it covered the Dane area and other parts of Wise and Dickinson that are really difficult to get to.
Well, this is your motion, but do you want to amend it or table it till we meet with Wise and Dickinson County to see if they're going to pick up that shared part? To actually talk with someone in Wise County and Dickinson County that's done it? Yep, but down in Hurry, and then, yep. And David, it doesn't get you up through Swords Creek and it doesn't get me at all in the loop.
Not until, and September, there's going to be another cell available for Russell, at least one, if not two, depending on how many you want. Because we're already in discussion with Starlink, and they said there goes five more at least that are going to be available literally in the next three months to get under contract so they can have it ready.
Five will be available?
Yeah.
But it's my, I guess my only concern is, is, you know, you have these other companies out here with prepared plan on federal and state funds that they're already receiving. So if you overlap, and, you know, we appropriate this taxpayer's money to get 60 customers and all of a sudden the other company comes in with 14.5 million, and they build fiber to the area, and it's a back and forth, you're losing that investment. It's just competition, but...
It is, yeah.
Well, competition's good, but I mean, it just, I'd rather put it in, I'd rather invest the money in areas that these other companies are going to say, well, I have no intention of going up the hill or in that area on that. Well, how do you identify unserved, underserved? Because that right there is just something that's just blowing me away. I have real problems with it.
My idea is while trying to get point to tell us where they're going to serve and they're preparing to receive information, they won't tell you because they don't want Verizon and Chantel and anybody else to know where they're going to go.
Or Starlink. That's what I was trying to get at, too.
When all this, when all this is said and done, what are you going to tell those people up on top of Sandy Ridge or up on top of Big A Mountain?
Horton Ridge.
We're out of money. We don't have any more money. We ran Starlink down through there and it's all Point Broadband.
Well, we won't be sitting here.
And everybody else down there.
We won't be sitting here, you'll be dealing with another group of people.
So what's my bottom line here that I would have to come up with to make this sale work with all money?
Just exactly what we said.
Nothing for my, that's based on the taxpayers' back in a roundabout way?
Right now, it's between 150 for the American Relief and 50 from VCSDA.
And that's it?
That's, that's why we're pushing it through the Otters and Legal Council, yes.
And, okay, and so there's not any extra money that this board has to appropriate from our local dollars?
Not unless you want to try to cover, get a share of that cell with Daint.
Yes, then you get into the share.
Well, they've waited this long, we can wait till September and see what happens.
Well, I mean, that one, the cell, if it's going to be active, it's just a matter then of negotiating out, because that cell is going to be active as well. The Dane area is going to be active as well.
And David can work on Tassel County.
Can you tell us if Dixon County is picking up the cell in Dane, in Dane with...
The cell overlaps Russell, Dickinson and Wise and...
Is that one activated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And right now, it was 60 accounts. The quote equitable thing was just 20, 20, 20, but again, however you three work that out, you may want to get more, you may want to get less, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to be hard, but to get along with it.
But you're talking about 60?
60, 60 per quadrant.
And it's all based on capacity because of the number of satellites that are up. That's what it comes down to.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Well, they can eat up whatever you guys agree to.
You could get this whole area through, you know, through here, through here.
And you don't have, just because you've got the cells that show right on top of the county, like the one that says 7119 right there, right, that, come down there, just to your right, just a little bit longer, please, to your right a little bit further. Okay, that cell right there where the cursor is, you can buy, you can get that cell as well, and yeah, it bleeds over to...
In September?
It's the partial sale.
It overlaps, I guess, Washington County.
It does, it does, Washington County.
But keep in mind, it's not that you're funding anything for Washington County, it's all based on the antenna, where it resides. That's your hardware, right? So the satellite, looking down, is just looking for that satellite. And if you use up all the capacity in Russell County, it's perfectly okay. That's not an issue.
Yeah, but my Dixon County friends are really going to use that because they don't have anything in that area, so I'd have to fuss with them over my...
If you talk to Larry, if you talk to Larry and discount board supervisors, they can grab 60 that'll be in that quadrant close to their, their area concentration of population. So you, and one of the things, the concept that was done was to talk to the other counties and if a, if one of the quadrants overlapped into either Tassel County, Buchanan or Dixon or Wise, is to prorate it based off the number of counts, and that would be how you'd split the 200,000. If we added up 20 accounts, 20 accounts and 20 accounts, which are at equally, but if you only had 10 in Daint on the upper end, that he got part of the Dixon County quadrant, it would be prorated just based off those 10 accounts.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
And then the balance could go to either Wise or Dickinson.
What you're going to have to deal with is you're going to fulfill 60 accounts and you're going to miss 61, 62, 63, and them people are going to be upset.
We're going to worry about that later.
At this point, David, that's very true, but keep in mind, this is all about capacity and satellites, and Elon must be shooting up a rocket literally every five days.
I understand.
And the reason why he's able to do that is because he's reutilizing those boosters.
He went up with one, didn't he?
No, that was...
Oh, that was the other competition.
That was the other billionaire.
No, I'm not trying to be, you know, I have a, you know, I just, I just became a grandpa, and, you know, we can look at this however we want, American Relief Grant, free money coming down the pipe, somebody got to pay this back.
Somebody, our grandchildren.
Our grandchildren's going to have to pay this money back. Now, you can say whatever you want, well, you know, it's not going to impact the taxpayer. That's bull, because down the road somewhere, somebody's going to end up having to pay all this Biden administration free funding or whatever they're sending down the pipe. Somebody's going to have to pay it back eventually, and I just, I just want to be a good steward. I don't, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm not trying to be hard to get along with, but I want to be a good steward of the funding and I don't want to overlap. We've had so much overlap, companies going in and they'll overlap another company and another company, and they're not going out here to the unserved, underserved community and building it. I mean, I'm just being honest with you. But they are providing a good technology, and it is good for our consumers, I agree with that, and I'm all for competition. But I just want to make sure that when there's areas that are targeted that would really be beneficial to people that could use it and not have access to anything else. They don't have access to anything else.
How we've got to identify.
You've got to have the way that...
Again, we did, we did some initial identification from the school system. Are any of those sections that you, are any of those, I don't know, it was about 100 and 110, so we just want to sell, are they on the fringes of the cell that look like they were being...
Well, a lot of them are outside of the cells entirely.
Right, now, some are, but there are still some in them, correct, that were identified as...
Probably, but we would have to, we would have to drive out, I mean, what we did was, we were pushed back in December when this first was brought about to provide that Starlink was going to be offering this for underserved students. You need to submit your data of any students that you know, the addresses, of course, it had to be...
So you've got addresses on all of them?
You've got addresses on the ones that told us on our survey back during the pandemic that they did not have access to high-speed internet. Now, have we driven out and verified different...
No, I mean, we... Even working with that, we need them on maps and look at it, and we need to drag Joseph Puckett in here and say, Joseph, are you going to service here? If he said no, there's your project. That's, that's all I want. I want to use the money.
I understand. I would say, yes, I will.
There's going to be a bunch of areas that he will...
I mean, it's the same difference.
They're not going to go, you know, they're not making money ahead, they're not going to do it regardless of what they say. to do it regardless of what they say.
Unserved, underserved.
We're, we're prepared to serve sixty on September first.
We can just dip out where they're at. We'd be able to check.
Call for the vote, ma'am chair. All right. All those in favor of this motion to fund this Starlink broadband contract? All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Okay, and all those opposed?
Uh.
Anybody need to abstain? Okay. You can come back in September with our choices.
That's going to be the issue because the cell was picked. I mean, I, I didn't pick the cell, okay? I mean, I, it was, it was offered to us, so, as this is the location that you wanted, so, uh, that's the issue that I've got to now try to grapple with as to how we handle that, but.
Because you had included air services in your ask to Starlink?
Yes.
Next, Mr. Wester, the American Relief Funds. Now, we're going to start spending it.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Again, previously spoken of the American Relief Fund grant. Again, we got five million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, nineteen dollars. This is the multi-year, the total fund. Again, two point five eight two, two thousand and nine and fifty dollar, fifty cents for FY twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, of course, we had to take care of what we call the safety net agencies first. We had to take care of all the rescue squads to give, you know, appropriate out, you know, funding for their, each one of the fire and rescue squads at fifteen thousand dollars each. We are, with the rescue squads each receiving that seventy-five thousand, it's being appropriated to the rescue squads, a hundred and twenty thousand, it's being appropriated to the fire departments, and of course, the food ministries is fifteen thousand. And the infrastructure, these are the projects, of course, the first one up there that has, you know, uh, is with assistance to the Russell County PSA for the fire, fire driver repair for thirty thousand dollars to repair the, the fire hydrants, uh, and repair to the structure foundation to the Russell County Holacre Library, uh, and of course, to the Russell County Sheriff Department, the Castlewood Radio, when we implemented the nine-one-one during the digital upgrade, there was a void and, and this is another one of those voids overrun, you know, for the Castlewood area to get continued emergency services into that area, we have to put an additional booster into the Castlewood to get it moved down. And I need approval for those.
I got a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, since Ms. Thomas is here tonight, uh, with her, uh, project, she's a nonprofit.
Yes.
Five oh three seven.
Yeah, she's five oh three seven. You do a food bank? Could we, uh, add her into this?
We, we did previously. She, she got funded under the CARES. She, she's not, and she's in limbo right now, so she's got a, once she gets established, she asked you would be eligible.
Did these other people, we care?
Yes.
Okay, as long as you do have an application in for this additional funding?
There is no application on this.
So you all just make a determination?
Well, they got to be active at the time and she's progressing towards being active.
Yeah.
Well.
We need a building.
Well, I know, well, I understand.
Thank you.
Well, let, let me just kind of, I know, I know we've, uh, discussed this and everything as far as the given school and, and everything like that and we want to have, we have to have a, legal, legal says we have to have a public hearing to bring before the public to be able to do that. And I know you're in a real bind. I understand. I've had a conversation with you, uh, to be able to, to.
However, I think we'd like county administrator and the county attorney to go ahead and start negotiating with you to see if, if we can work out all these because there's some costs that it's hard and fast cost, you know? So, you know, it's not that we're going to sit idle here until it's a public hearing. We want the county attorney and the county administrator to work with you and see what we can get worked out and then, uh, we'll, we'll know with the county at the public hearing.
I know you're in a pickle. I understand that. I mean, we got to follow the legal guidance, the legal counsel, but, uh, you know, I would like to, if something was to happen, be blessed to work all this out and get you the facility. I would like to, the board to take into consideration because that would be a huge impact to get that money. I mean, to be able to get you a facility and five thousand dollars would even be a blessing in itself, but I just wanted to bring that up, yeah.
And keep in mind, just because we don't have a building, we're still serving.
Are you, are you currently serving? Because that is one of the requirements under American Relief. You have to be, when we prove this on that date, they got to be in service. You're still serving.
We, we were without a building. We were in service until about two weeks ago.
Actually, we're still in service.
Well, yes, but.
Till why?
Till Thursday, yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll work through that. Let's, let's get all the details made, okay? Yes, yes. But I will need approval for these minus, you know, the ACI for the school. Yes, I'll need approval for that.
I'll make the move.
That's three hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay. Motion by David and a second by Steve. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed? All right, Lonzo, next.
Next on the county administrator reports and requests is lead, I still hear you at, that's the one that was drawn out. He was here, ma'am, Melvin's here. First, next one is a need of a public hearing concerning B-Dot Route six thirty-seven, a discontinued bridge, prospective easement and right-of-way, which has a thirty foot, thirty foot in width and two tenths of one mile. Uh, this is into, uh, of course, the Swords Creek area. We have been working with John, John here, lead lead?
He's gone a little back.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a bridge that was built in nineteen thirteen and we, we've got complaints trying to clean it up, but one of the things that we have tried to explain to the community and to the adjacent property owners, the camp, in nineteen thirteen, then under the Bird Act, when it reverted down, we only picked up the easement. We don't own the property, we don't own the bridge. B-Dot is working with us right now when they, they discontinue the use, but it reverted back to the county, so the county now has to go through the process of doing a public hearing to abandon that easement. So what it amounts to in legal and layman terms and V-Dot terms, of course, I pulled all the men's and it's in, in y'all's packet and you can see it right here. The road originally went through and connected in here. They, V-Dot came in and put this bridge in and routed the traffic through here and came back through. There's actually an old road bed through here with an existing bridge that was built in nineteen thirteen. Well, when V-Dot put this new section in and this, they discontinued the use on this, they didn't abandon it. So we, it reverted back to the county on the easement, the prescribed easement. So we're going to have to have a public hearing to discontinue, you know, abandon this section of easement all the way through here. The property owners that are adjacent here would love it because now they have no easement going through their property. So we're going to request a public hearing to abandon this proposed road bed and bridge.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Is that going to be on the?
We'll have three public hearings.
Yes, yes.
Three, second.
Pack of sandwiches.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor of this public hearing for this discontinuing this bridge?
Uh.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Next on the county administrator reports and request is the deputy emergency management coordinator position. This is a part-time position to, uh, assist with emergency management and of course, we just got rid of the emergency declaration. Uh, I have offered the, uh, the job to a candidate and have accepted, so I need approval for a motion and movement on the deputy emergency management coordinator.
All right, do we have a motion to hire a part-time?
Some, some move, ma'am chair.
Steve. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
David, any discussion?
We have a motion, a second, but I ask any other meeting to postpone this another month that we can, uh, review the application of some other people that's interested in this position as well as have some more interviews by Lonzo and Jess Pope, who's the head of that department.
All right, any further comments? All right, all those in favoring of hiring this candidate?
Uh.
Anyone opposed?
Uh.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Next on the county administrator request is another position. It's, uh, I regret to say that our Russell County Tourism Coordinator has took another job, so, uh, we will, I'm asking the board to accept a resignation and also approval to advertise for this position. Some move.
David and second, Lou, all right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed?
Uh.
Next is a, is a request for travel for, uh, Frieda Sweeney and Crystal White for the Commissioner of Revenue. This is their Commissioner of Revenue's conference. This is a requirement for their certification annually, which during the COVID, we didn't have it, but they had it two years. So this is a, a two-year waiting meeting, so I need approval for motion for approval for the Commissioner of Revenue Conference. Some move.
All right, David, do we have a second?
Second.
Lou, all those in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed? Lonzo?
Thank you, ma'am. Next is the, uh, of course, that was added to the Virginia Coalfield Economic Development Authority Vaseta Resolution Concerning Virginia's General Assembly Two Thousand Twenty-One Commission. Uh, this is a resolution in, in conjunction with the Buchanan County, Dixon County, Lee and Scott and the other surrounding coal counties for resolution support for the Virginia Coalfield Economic Development Authority, whereas the coal and gas resources are continually extracted from Russell County as a producer of coal and gas in the Commonwealth. And of course, whereas the Virginia Coalfield Economic Development Authority Vaseta is the primary means of fostering diversification for the county's economic weight from dependence on coal and gas industrials. The board finds that Vaseta is a critical economic development tool for Russell County based on the hundreds of jobs retained or created in Russell County over the last four years with Vaseta financing and the hundreds currently being created due to Vaseta's financial incentives and the many, many more created or retained through Vaseta's efforts over its long history. Whereas pursuant to legislation passed in the Two Thousand Twenty-One Session of the General Assembly, a commission was appointed to discuss reallocation of Vaseta's primary source of funding to institutions which may or may not be successful in the field of economic development and may or may not, may or may concentrate their efforts in Russell County as Vaseta has. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Russell County Board of Supervisors hereby reaffirms its support for Vaseta and its operations to defunding any, defunding of its programs or diversification of resources to other entities. I need a motion.
Do we have a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll, I'll make that motion. Also, I'd like to, uh, separate state that, uh, we would request that this funding be reallocated back to Vaseta, uh, on the million dollars that we're going to be losing with the governors and, and what they done away with the coal, coal tax credit. It's going to, it's going to be a huge impact for Russell County. I'll tell you, a negative impact. So this right here, absolutely, we need to make sure that that money's restored back to Vaseta. I mean, I don't think we need another project. I think we need to support what we have and that's just my feeling.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed?
Uh, abstaining.
Next on the county, county, county administrator reports and requests, this course is already being done, the public hearing for the Cleveland School property transferred to the IDA has been set, the public hearing for the given school property has been set for the lease, and the last one that was added is an approval for the solid waste truck driver approval position that is currently, right now, we are running Liche and it is working very well at the Danksour Treatment Plant and at very minimal cost. I need approval for the driver. Some move.
Second. Lou, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed?
Ma'am, that concludes the county administrator reports and requests.
All right, matters by the vote. Tim, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Lou? No, thank you. David?
Just one thing, I just want to make it clear too that on the property that Lonzo showed of the Cleveland School, that won't have any negative impact with the Appalachian Gateway and Horse Association or the trash site or the cemetery. I just want to throw that out there, even before we have a public hearing, I know that will come up, but I just wanted to go on note, make sure, but I appreciate it, appreciate the board tonight.
Steve?
Yes, ma'am, I've got a couple of things. First, I had a, somebody called me about the signs at the waste collection sites and asked if they could be updated and they didn't say exactly. We're talking about Swords Creek site in particular, Lonzo, and it may be that the times are not correct on those sites, so if you could just look into see if we can get those updated. Secondly, I've made an effort last board meeting to try to get a little better handle on spending at schools and, uh, the board went and passed the resolution as the, the budget resolution. So I want to make this motion. I'd like to make motion that's allowed in the last paragraph of page three of the recently classed Russell County Budget Resolution for the budget year ending, beginning July the first, two thousand twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, which states, and I quote, "In addition, the county administrator may require written reports on how previous allocations was or were spent before any further dispersments were made." And I want to make a motion that we instruct the county administrator to require these detailed written monthly reports on the expenditures of the previous month from the Russell County School System and Russell County Department of Social Service. Now, this is not intended to hold up any dispersments and I'm not saying that the dispersments won't be made because the money's all been, already been allocated, but this is just to get a better understanding of how and when those allocated funds are spent throughout the budget year. So that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yes. Is, I, I need further explanation from our attorney. Have you run this by Katie?
No.
Oh, okay. You, you have to run this by Katie? Okay. You want to expound on that or do we need to, um, have your overview of that?
No, no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be amend in the balance. No, it, um, really is not an amendment to the resolution. It's just asking that he enforce that.
You instructed the county administrator just to ask for that monthly report, you know, most of the agencies.
So, I mean.
Not to hold any dispersments because money's already been allocated. We can't do.
And, and I, I really can't speak for the Department of Social Services, but, because I don't attend their meetings, but attending the school board meetings, I do know that they pass every, every monthly meeting they have, they, they, they approve their bills and there's a list of financials and is that what you have in mind or?
Yeah, well, something along that line because I know it has to come through the treasurer's office, the payments, so. And it says right in there, we can ask that the county administrator may ask or, or may require it. And I just, I'm going to instruct the county administrator to require it.
Yeah.
We allocated all the money, I'd just like to know how and when it's going to be spent.
And I guess for the, sometimes, I guess, just thinking about how they go, which they, the, they'll have the agenda a few days before they meet. Most, most often, well, no, I won't say that, sometimes, sometimes they meet before you all and they will have already approved it by the time you have your meeting, but sometimes, for instance, next month, you meet on the second, they'll meet on the fifth.
But there's nothing that we have to approve. I mean, money's already been allocated, expended how they want. I just want to know how.
You just want that report?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want that report. It's nothing for us to approve. When we allocated the money, it was gone.
Is it on their website? Does she, does that girl, their clerk put it on their website, or do you know?
It's on Board docs, and the public can see the, the financial report. But I mean, I don't, I don't think that would be, I don't think that would be overly burdensome. Well, I'm not gonna say that. I don't wanna speak for other boards. But I mean, I do know that they prepare that monthly report, and it's a part of their agenda.
Okay. All right, there's been a motion and a second. So all those in favor?
Uh.
And I'm gonna abstain because Katie hadn't reviewed it, and they're already there, so I don't know. I'm just abstaining. Okay.
Just see it.
Okay. All right. Horace, any other comments?
I do. I'd like to say I'm very much disappointed in this board for not giving these other applicants that's wanting to apply for this part-time deputy coordinator position. I think it's only fair for each one that gave an application to be able to be interviewed. And besides, it was taken off the website, like I think you said, 30 hours, Lonzo, and people didn't know that it was still, the position was still available, therefore they haven't had equal opportunity. And I think it's very unfair to take a position that this board has taken and not, not let these people be interviewed.
And with that, let's, let's do remember Carl. He lost his grandfather in his services tonight. And our next meeting will be August the 2nd here in this boardroom. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
Some move, Madam Chair.
Lou? Second. David, all those in favor?
Uh.